November seventh, twenty eighteen, meeting of the Gaithersburg Planning Commission. First up is the approval of our minutes from October seventeenth. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the minutes of October seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen, as you ran the record.
Second? It's moved in second, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That passes unanimously, thanks very much. Do we have record plats tonight?
Yes, we do.
Okay, because I saw it on the website, but not on the written, so take it away, Ray.
We have one plat for your consideration tonight, plat number RP eight zero zero eight, two thousand and eighteen. It is parcel D, North Over Center, the McDonald's Restaurant at four six five North Frederick. Staff has reviewed the plat and it is ready for your approval. The plat combines two lots for the McDonald's property in conformance with the approved site plan amendment that came before the commission a few months ago.
Great. Any questions about the record plat agenda? Okay, is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the record plat agenda as presented this evening.
Second? It's moved in second, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously, thanks, Ray. We'll sign off at the end, I guess. All right, that takes us to our public hearing agenda, and there's one item tonight for ASDP dash eight zero four zero dash twenty sixteen to allow childcare as a permitted use for the property located at four Kent Garden Circle, the MXD Mixed-Use Development Zone. This would be an amendment to the schematic development plan presented from staff, is Ray Roques, and I believe you're going to set this up as a concurrent?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, okay. Good evening again. This is public hearing on the amendment to schematic development plan ASDP eighty forty, two thousand and eighteen. The applicants, Letitia and Teresa Gasaway of Mines in Motion Childcare, submitted the application on September eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen. The applicant is requesting to allow commercial daycare as a permitted use at four Kent Garden Circle. The property is located within the Kentland subdivision and is bounded by Rachel Carson Elementary School to the southwest, here, Shiftley Square Road to the east, and Kent Garden Circle to the north. The property is located here. The property is located in the MXD Zone Mixed-Use Development, and the subject property, along with the large portion of the surrounding Kentland's community, received approval for schematic development plan SDP one, section four, phase one, by resolution R sixty-eight eighty-nine on September twenty, or, excuse me, September fifth, nineteen eighty-nine. This application comes before the planning commission as a public hearing pursuant to section twenty-four dash one nine eight C of the city code. Following the courtesy review that was presented to Mayor and City Council on October first, two thousand and eighteen, the council directed staff to have the amendment be referred to the planning commission for a public hearing and final action. The hearing was duly advertised in the August eighteenth, August, and August twenty-fifth, two thousand and eighteen, issues of the Washington Post, and the property was properly posted with signage. At the present time, there are twenty-one exhibits in the record file, and all exhibits are referenced in the exhibit list. All of the individual exhibits may be reviewed during the course of the meeting on the city's webpage or at the Planning and Code Administration office during regular business hours. Any objections to any exhibits should be noted prior to the closing of the record, otherwise the exhibits will be deemed received into evidence. Since the applicant is only requesting a change in use, both applications ASDP eighty forty, two thousand and eighteen, and AFP eighty fifty-four, two thousand and eighteen, have been filed concurrently. Since the amendment to schematic development application is a minor amendment, staff is of the opinion that the planning commission can close the record and take final action on both of these two applications this evening. Here tonight to present the application and answer questions are the applicants, Letitia and Teresa Gasaway of Mines in Motion Childcare.
Good evening.
Good evening. I am Letitia Gasaway, and this is my sister Teresa Gasaway. And we are the owners of Mines in Motion Childcare. The proposed location of the business is across from Rachel Carson Elementary, and right beside it is Kentland Children's Center. For the parking, there are fifty parking spots in the Kent Garden Circle area. The existing daycare already have forty parking spots, there are forty parking stalls. The proposed daycare for Mines in Motion Childcare would need six. At the current time, we are looking to expect twelve children as our maximum at this time. The performing arts would need twenty-two parking stalls, and dwelling, there are two parking stalls. So fifty would be plenty to move forward with this. Mines in Motion Childcare will be licensed by MSDE, which is Merlin State Department of Education. Our plan is to accommodate infants starting with six weeks until the age of twenty-four months old at this time. Our hours of operation would be six-thirty a.m. to seven o'clock p.m. We specialize in focusing on the whole child and their individual needs. Mines in Motion Childcare will not have any relation to the dance studio, which is also at four Kent Garden Circle. No improvements are needed to approve the childcare facility per MSDE. And MSDE requirements, we're well aware of what they require regarding the building, the facility in itself, and it has enough space to accommodate all of the children enrolled.
Can you clarify for the record what MSDE is?
Yes, Merlin State Department of Education.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you have any questions for me at this time?
I'm sure. The proposed use, does it replace something that's in play right now, or is it vacant space? And really, actually, let me back it us, so I understand the calculation on parking and that, I appreciate that. And it looks like, I think, staff report in your presentation acknowledged there's parking to accommodate what appears to be the demand for it.
Sure.
But I'm just curious if the, if you're displacing or replacing something that's already in the building, or if you're filling a vacant space with this new use?
I believe they're changing about five hundred square feet that is currently used for the dance studio and our parking calculation to childcare, so it's replacing.
So theoretically, it's offsetting somewhat whatever parking calculation was used, I know it's a little less precise than that, but...
The parking calculation for the performing arts was based on how many students and not the square footage. So the performing arts still has the same parking requirements, even though the square footage has gone down. So it is the same, but they are replacing square footage that used to be used.
And of course, the daycare students aren't going to be driving, so...
[laughing]
And if they are, they really need to move on.
That's right.
[laughing]
Just one quick question about the parking is, are the other spots, I mean, dedicated for the use, like, there's a restricted parking sign or something? It says for that space, because anybody could park there, that's why I made that up.
There's, along for Kent Garden Circle, there is restricted parking signs that says parking for Chester Brook Academy, and at the time, we do need to change the name, but it was, it's the Performing Arts Studio.
Okay, yes, I was just concerned, because it's really close to, what's that, twenty-eight, and anybody could just park there, so, so you will do that.
There's a sign, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, sir.
And I was just looking at the parking calculation, because I was a little confused, but I understand, right? I looked at it, and it made sense. Didn't make sense when I was reading it three o'clock this morning, but now it does.
[laughing]
Do you have any provisions for any outdoor activities that may occur? Because right now, I believe it's fenced in at some side, but I don't know whether you have access to that area.
We don't have access to Chester Brook Academy fenced-in area, but there is square footage on the side of the building, and it's enough space to accommodate the children.
Is it currently fenced in and currently restricted as far as access from the outside?
No, it's not fenced in.
So do you have plans to do that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, is that part of this?
That'll be site plan at some point, maybe permit or right, right?
They're going to come in with a fence permit, I believe.
Ah, okay, that's, that's a good clarification.
From this.
Okay, great. And the other, just a quick question is, are you on the first floor or the second floor of that building? It's two floors, I believe.
First floor.
First floor.
Yes.
So just walk up the four steps and right into the building?
No steps.
There's no steps?
No steps.
Okay, that's the word. Thank you.
You've been going in the wrong door all these years.
[laughing]
He was going to adult daycare.
People keep telling me, get out there, whoa, you're not even allowed. Great, any other questions? Go ahead.
Question really for Ray. As I read through this, this is not, what we're reviewing tonight is about an allowable use. It's not about a specific square footage or a specific number of students, right? So in the future, you know, if the daycare wanted to expand, or if another daycare wanted to come in there in the future, we wouldn't be, have to go through this again, it would already be at a permitted use.
Okay. Although we are doing, to be clear, we have an amended final plan concurrently, so...
Right.
The use as part of the SDP piece, the actual, I actually don't know what would be covered by the amended final plan in this case, because if they're not changing the building or changing the...
They have to change the parking, so if they wanted to expand or a new use come in, it would have to at least go in front of staff, depending on how much change, it may not have to come back to the...
I guess that's what I was really getting at, that, you know, changes, expansion, you know, one tenant goes out, daycare expands, anything like that would be handled at the staff level, it doesn't really... So when this SDP was established, it sounded like it was number one, right? That was SDP one?
Yes.
This was the first reason? The use was established by building and not by sketch plan type layout, right? So each building took on their...
It allowed the childcare next door, but it didn't allow childcare at this particular location.
This building was the general store.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, is there anyone here that would like to comment on this application? And again, this is for both the SDP, the use question, and the final site, or the amended final plan. Okay, nobody? All right, Ray, what's the recommendation?
Staff recommends that the planning commission close the record for application ASDP eighty forty, two thousand and eighteen, and proceed with final action. And staff recommends that the planning commission, based on the evidence and testimony submitted into the record and the findings and the staff analysis, approve amendment to schematic development plan ASDP eighty forty, two thousand and eighteen, and adopt the resolution finding it in compliance with section twenty-four dash one sixty D point ten B with no conditions. And staff recommends that the planning commission, based on the exhibits submitted, the applicant's testimony and the staff report findings and recommendations, grant AFP eighty fifty-four, two thousand and eighteen, finding it in compliance with section twenty-four dash one seventy and twenty-four dash one seventy-two A of the city code with no conditions.
And then are we going to do the site plan at the same time, or in the same stream of, okay?
That was the last one.
That was the last one, yeah.
That was the last one.
All right, any discussion, any concerns with, let me start with use. Site planning issues aside, any issues with allowing the use? Okay. And I will say, I'm happy to see that, I know it's a nice viable addition to the community, and it doesn't displace the entire use that's already there, so we can keep a mixed-use characteristic of that area, so I think that's great. All right, on the site plan side, I, really, we're just talking about a parking calculation and adjustment there. Any concerns on the parking assumptions?
No.
No, I mean, the hours, I think, are very compatible with the elementary school nearby, and there's a lot of traffic, I know, between eight and nine o'clock in the morning at the elementary school. There's crossing guards right at the circle, by the way.
Yes.
So you have that as well, so I think that having the hours from six-thirty to seven o'clock at night, I don't think it fears at all whatsoever and causes any kind of traffic problems.
Correct.
Good. All right, any other concerns?
Just, um, is there any external lighting around the perimeter of the building?
Yes.
There is?
There's lighting, yes.
It's, I'm just talking about, but just not the streetlights, but just, you know...
Yes, the, it's, it's very well lit.
Okay, okay, yeah, okay, that's good.
All right, cool. All right, if there are no other concerns, why don't we start knocking out the motion? Ray, do you want, you want four, so our three separate motions, I guess, is that what you're recommending? Okay, so anybody willing to take them without? Okay, go ahead. Sure. I move that the planning commission close the record for application ASDP eighty forty dash twenty eighteen and proceed with final action.
Second?
It's moved in second, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Next?
Mr. Chair, I move that the planning commission, based on the evidence and testimony submitted to the record, the findings, staff analysis, approve amendment to schematic development plan ASDP eighty forty dash twenty eighteen, and adopt the resolution finding it in compliance with section twenty-four dash one sixty D point ten B with zero conditions.
Second?
It's moved in second, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That passes unanimously, and now that takes us to the site plan, the official site plan amendment, final plan, is your motion, please?
All right, Mr. Chair, I move that the planning commission, based on exhibits submitted, applicants' testimony, staff reports, findings, and recommendation, grant AFP eighty fifty-four dash twenty eighteen, finding it in compliance with section twenty-four dash one seventy and twenty-four dash one seventy-two A of the city code with zero conditions.
Second?
Moved in second, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That passes unanimously. Thanks very much, good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Welcome to the neighborhood.
Yeah.
Are you all relocating from somewhere else, or is this a new?
Expanding. We have two daycare centers in Air Park.
Great.
Two minutes apart from each other.
All right, welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
All right, that takes us to our, what does it take us to, our second site plan, which is SP dash seven nine seven five dash twenty eighteen, Discovery Park, a fourteen point nine five acre city park located at six oh one Orchard Ridge Drive in the MXD Mixed-Use Development Zone, and this is final site plan. Presenting from staff is Caroline Sidon. Good evening, Caroline.
Good evening. This is final site plan review of SP seven nine seven five, twenty eighteen, which was submitted by the City of Gaithersburg Department of Public Works on July third, twenty eighteen. The application proposes the development of a fourteen point nine five acre city park along Orchard Ridge Drive, shown here. There are two parcels, Metamune Campus to the north and west, their main campus is here to the west, and their Discovery Meadows Child Development Center is to the north, and then the Quins Orchard Community surrounding it to the east. The, the plan proposes a park with walking trails, playground equipment, picnic areas, and gardens, and the schematic development plan SDP seven nine seven four, twenty eighteen, was approved by the city council on October first, twenty eighteen, with one condition, and I just wanted to mention that there have been no changes to the plan since the SDP was approved, so exhibit six, which is shown in your package as the approved SDP, is serving as the final site plan, because it's the same plan. Lydia Kimball and, from Flora Teeter, the landscape architect, and Billy Swales, the engineer from Triad, are both here, and I will turn it over to them.
Great, thanks, good evening.
Good evening, thank you for having us.
You're always welcome.
So this is, we're going to show you the park, some of you have seen this presentation before, it's largely the same, but we're always delighted to show off our work. We love this park. This is our, this is our team, the Triad team, Billy's actually leading the team, and he's submitting all of the documents for permitting and review. This is my team at Flora Teeter, Emily Lewis and Joe Ignatius are not here tonight, and we've been working very closely with Michelle and Melanie, who's the project manager on the Gaithersburg side.
Hi, Michelle, thanks for being here.
Thank you for having us. So again, this, these next few slides are going to give you a little bit of the background, I'll try to run through this quickly, so it's not too repetitive, how we created the park, and some of the goals, and then the amenities that were included in the park now. This is an aerial of the full site and the immediate context. You can see our overall site, I believe, is about eleven, almost twelve acres, although not all of that is part of the actual functional park area, and as you can see, it's largely wooded. Looking a little bit closer, you can see some of the inherent challenges of the park. We have this flood zone, we have forest conservation easement, we have some steep slopes, and then a berm along the, along the street. So the actual functional part of the, of the site is considerably smaller, and I think we're at about five acres for the, for the actual park itself. We have both pedestrian and vehicular access to the park. There is no dedicated parking, but there is street parking that allows parking for thirty-seven cars, I believe. So access is primarily walking and biking. This shows you a little bit of the existing vegetation on the park, on the park site. We took, we took our, this existing tree cover, gave us some clues about what kinds of planting we wouldn't want to do in the final planting plan. We've incorporated many of the, not necessarily the existing trees on the site, but the existing tree species on the site in the final planting plan. The understory material is largely invasive, shrubby material, and that will all be removed. The, there are a handful of mature trees on the site, which we're intending to save. It was a little hard to get to those trees at the moment, so once, once the demolition begins, we'll be able to take a closer look at those trees and confirm that they are indeed worth saving. We've, we've worked the park around them, and we're assuming they will be, so that's our, that's our strategy. So this next section focuses on the actual design of the park, and briefly, these were, this was our overall goal for the park, very straightforward approach to it. And you can see some of the initial observations gave us some guidance on how to actually develop the park. The woodland and the stream gave us, we had some restrictions there, there was an existing berm, which remains, gives us some natural separation from the street. I don't need to read all of these, but these were some of the things that we observed and took into consideration as we developed the park design. This was the proposed, this is the current proposed design. We went through a design process with Michelle and her team. We had several concepts that we worked through, had some alternatives, and this was the final site plan. We did have a community meeting with the neighborhood and got some great feedback, not just on layout, but some, we also got some feedback on some interesting actual amenities and pieces of play equipment that they were interested in seeing in the park. We tried to focus on things that did not exist in other parks, so that this would be a park that offered some things that couldn't be found in other city parks. These next few slides focus in on some of the special areas within the park, and we can describe those elements a little bit. They're very straightforward. There are two play areas, this is one of them, the components are based on input not only from Reckon Parks, but also, again, from the neighborhood, and the idea was to provide a variety of pieces that would be attractive to multi-age kids, and equipment that would also allow both social play and some individual play. This is the second, this is the second play area. The, the play areas are separated, but they're, they're not divided, they're not dedicated to any particular age group. So these, just, this play area has slightly different components. Each of the play areas incorporates both resilient surface, the rubberized surface, as well as mulch, and both of those are accessible. This is, this is an image of, it's, I wish it was a little bit bigger, because the detail in this is really wonderful. These sections show, one section, this discovery playground section is here, which is this top one. Discovery Nook is this little section across here, and, and the reason for these is to show the relationships between the elements and how the, how the landform actually is around each of these play areas. Helps give some scale and some perspective. These are our typical, we have a trail that goes, it's really only about, almost about a third of a mile, I think, it's really not, not very long. We have little trail markers to tell you how far you've gone, so it doesn't take long to get to a trail marker. So, but we did include that. The, the trail itself is a flexible pavement, and is supposed to be a little bit easier on the knees, so that's a good thing. We have, I believe, five picnic shelters, is that right, Michelle? And they are covered. This is a second series of two other sections. This, the picnic grove is here, and Little Butterfly Haven is here. This, the butterfly garden is, is the most designed, if you will, area of the park. The rest of it, the rest of the park is, is going to be largely shade trees, flowering trees, and understory that is intended to naturalize. This, the butterfly garden is intended to be a little bit more, I hesitate to say intensively maintained, but it's a little more intentional in its planting plan. And as it describes, it's intended to attract birds and butterflies. These are some of our typical park areas. Now, obviously, it's not going to look like this right away, sadly, but we are naturalizing materials. We've incorporated a large meadow area, there is a large open lawn for frisbee throwing, whatever, open play, flexible space. We've incorporated large swaths of bulb plantings, which, again, will naturalize. And the butterfly garden, which we hope very much will look like that. These are some of the site amenities that we've included, the entrance signs, some site furniture. This is not a dog park, per se, although dogs will be, will be welcome. We've added, incorporated some signage, there's a no-mo zone, which, which we wanted to identify. There are two park information signs, one at each entrance, here and here, which give a very conceptual diagram of the, of the park and the various areas within it. There are bike racks, fencing, it's not solid fencing, but there are places where there is fencing across the backside, just to sort of suggest that you're supposed to stay out of the forest conservation area, easement area. And next steps, we're here today for final approval, planning commission, and then, I'm not a hundred percent sure that this construction schedule is, is exactly where we are, but we are working toward that.
Great, thank you. Any questions?
I just had one quick question about the no-mo zone. Is that the meadow or the butterfly garden?
That would be the meadow.
Okay. And then, silly question, but...
No silly questions.
Okay, just silly people.
Not even.
Is the butterfly haven different than the butterfly garden?
No.
Okay, okay. So it wasn't a silly question. Okay.
The butterflies sometimes get confused.
Right. They're going to be wondering.
So are you going to, this is a silly question, are you going to try to bring butterflies there? I mean, how?
They will be naturally attracted to the plants that are planted.
Okay, okay, I wondered how that worked, I mean, is there a butterfly wrangler?
They come in as caterpillars.
Very slowly.
They're easier to handle.
Yeah.
Because that leash is like a caterpillar.
One, one quick question, so the dog area is not as closed.
Correct.
But there's signs that, like, certain areas for dogs and certain areas not for dogs?
No. No, not designated at all, there'll be pet waste stations.
Of course, you've got to be on leash, yeah, okay, okay.
Great, I'll wait for the discussion.
On the, on the parking, I know you said there's thirty-six spaces available within the adjacent communities. I know at some other city parks that are within, within neighborhoods, there's been a, you know, a marking or a dedicating of at least some of those spaces to be for park visitors, especially where, you know, we're relying on street parking within neighborhoods that tends to, you know, fill up at different times of the day. Is there a plan to identify at least some of those spaces as, you know, for park visitors? Or is it a first come, first served, if there are no spaces, done?
That's my understanding, although as an operational issue, I'm not sure I'm the one that's...
I don't, I don't think that there's any plan to designate any of those spaces.
Okay.
And, and these are streets not in the neighborhood, per se, they're streets along Orchard Ridge.
Yeah, those are the parking spaces along Orchard Ridge that are counted as, as thirty-six, thirty-seven.
Okay.
Those, all of those spaces are on the south side, not on, you're not counting on the north side?
I think it's all of the spaces on both sides as you go around Orchard Ridge.
There are three crosswalks, as I recall, going from one side to the other side, so it should be.
My one quick question for Michelle. Michelle, is, do you have to manage the waste, like, picking up the trash?
Not her, not her person.
No, not me personally.
Well, first of all, I wanted to confirm there are five picnic tables with the picnic shelters over there.
Well, first of all, I wanted to confirm there are five picnic tables with the picnic shelters over them. I looked at the plan. And then the city will take care of the pet waste and the trash and recycling or whatever's on site.
So it's like a regular schedule?
Yes, the city handles that with all of the parks.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, and then with the on-street parking, they will not be labeled specifically for the park. And if you recall, we went through this when we had Constitution Gardens Park. We repurposed that park, it's absolutely beautiful, a natural play space, and everyone was concerned about the parking and there really has not been any issues. People walk to the parks in their neighborhood. And then as childcare centers visit, they usually will drive up to the park, drop the children off, and then park somewhere and then come back to return to pick up the children.
Okay.
Any other questions? A couple, I wanna cover real quick. Will trails be into the park from the adjacent uses, like sort of like backside of the park? Or is it exclusively from the street?
Just from the street.
Just from the street.
Now, remember, there's forest conservation area to the back, so... Doesn't mean that people can't walk through it.
Yeah, okay. And is there, there is no lighting on this park, or we had this conversation, I think during the SCP, it's, it'll, whatever street lighting might be there is there, but nothing with the dog meant that...
No additional lighting.
And, oh, yes.
All city parks are open sunrise to sunset. So we don't put lighting in the parks because we don't want to attract patrons into the park at night.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Any other questions?
Just one quick question, is there an age limit on the gaga pit?
There is not, and actually, that was one of the elements, and the other element was swings. Those two elements were brought up from the community that were not originally in the plan, that were requested. And then I had a follow-up with my staff that works with the middle school and elementary school age children, and I says, you know, we are, we're looking at these two features to go ahead and put in the park. Is there anything else you can think of in four-square? It is really trendy, and all the children want to play four-square. So we're also incorporating that into the park design.
Everything old is new again.
Great.
I just had one question regarding the access from, from the streets. I think that, that at the public hearing, we discussed the accessibility for the, for, other than those that are at the extremities, I guess, or the, the both sides, both sides of the park. And so I wonder if there was any consideration given to this street that's in the middle? Because I believe that it's just probably going to become a little trail that people come up through.
You wanna put the plan up real quick, make sure I understand where your question is going?
The entrances, sorry.
It's not up on the monitor just yet, so, okay.
So entrances to the park are here and here.
Right.
And there is the existing berm here, which is what's being referenced.
Right, and we looked at that extensively, and there are new trees that were planted all across the berm through a grant through the Department of Natural Resources that are youth-planted in partnership with a lot of other nonprofit organizations. And we thought, you know what, we'll start here and then we'll see how the park is utilized. And at another point later, if warranted, we can reevaluate that. But we just didn't want to cut right into the berm right away.
That makes sense.
Yeah, I had expressed my data about that as well in previous hearings. And quite frankly, I actually did walk the site. And the berm is significant and the trees are, you know, vegetating, I guess is the word. But going from either side, one side or the other, really isn't that significant. And it is a small park, really. And even though it's called the Great Lawn, I don't expect there's gonna be concerts there or anything going on. So, it's not quite like the sheet meadow in Central Park. So I would say that cutting through right now doesn't make any sense.
Right, and because it is such a small little neighborhood park, we will not be doing any formal city programming in it, like our backyard concerts or backyard movie nights or anything like that at all to really attract big crowds to the park.
I, I think the operative word there is neighborhood. That's, that's really what it's all about.
I thought it was park. I was, I was considering all the long stuff.
So, so you, you don't expect, like, any grilling or anything like that, right? Just people just gathering and maybe having their lunch?
Well, certainly people can picnic and we've made accommodations for that.
We encourage picnicking, but we have a park ordinance, which is chapter fifteen of the city code. And it does prohibit people bringing grills in. You can go ahead and grill on existing grills that are located at certain parks.
Certain parks, right.
Right, but we prohibit people bringing grills in, it's a safety hazard.
And there'll be, will there be a sign to remind folks of that?
We will put signage in this park like we have in all of our other parks.
Good.
Great. Okay, and, and we're at the point of the presentation where I should ask if anybody in the audience is here to comment on this application, but I have suspicion that they're not. So thank you. And the recommendation then, Caroline, please?
I just want to mention there, you have one condition in your, in your package, and I'm going to add...
Which they've essentially taken care of, I guess, right?
Yeah, well, the, the condition hasn't been taken care of yet. But I am going to add another condition and I'll read it into the record. We, we just realized we had, we're missing some spec sheets for some of the park amenities, so it relates to that. Staff recommends that the planning commission, based upon the exhibits submitted, the applicant's testimony and the staff report, findings and recommendation, grant SP seven-nine-seven-five-two thousand and eighteen final site plan approval, finding it in compliance with sections twenty-four-one-seventy and twenty-four-one-seventy-one of the city zoning ordinance with two conditions. The first one you have already in your package. And the second proposed condition is that the applicant is to provide material spec sheets to be reviewed and approved by planning staff prior to the issuance of a site development permit.
Well, I can't imagine any park proposal that wouldn't be compatible with the surroundings or in any way hinder the health and safety of people in the, in the community. So it's a little bit hard to imagine that we need to grade this against twenty-four-one-seventy, but for the record, it seems to be a very appropriate use for the, for the, for the empty, empty property. And I know from the fact that there's been a lot of work done in Michelle's department on some of the master plan work for Parks and Rec, that there's a, there's a really keen awareness of amenities and uses and, you know, kind of a micro-planning of, of elements that need to be included in parks and what's, what's, what's out there needs to be augmented. So I trust that that all is sort of coming through in this plan without us necessarily getting into every little detail. So I'm comfortable with that moving forward. And I don't, I don't see any real concerns, frankly, to get on the record. There was a really good discussion at the public hearing and it dealt with some of the things about access and all, and that's all been, I think, well addressed. So I don't, I don't have any problem with the conditions as proposed, or it's a wonderful addition to the...
It's just a super, super use of space, and it makes the, our city just a destination, you know, it's, and it's integrated into a residential area and, you know, commercial area. So I think it's, it's just excellent.
What's it gonna be called, do you know yet?
Discovery.
Discovery Park.
Discovery Park, okay. Well, you know, there's always working names. And then there's the one where they, you know, name it after Trudy or something.
Trudy Park, there we go.
All right, any other concerns or discussion? Okay, is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, based on the exhibits submitted, the applicant's testimony and the staff report, findings and recommendations, I look that we grant SP seven-nine-seven-five-dash-two thousand and eighteen final site plan approval, finding it in compliance with section twenty-four-dash-one-seventy and twenty-four-dash-one-seventy-one of the city zoning ordinance with the two conditions as written to the record.
Second?
Let's move to the second in a long favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Passed unanimously, thanks very much, good luck, look forward to...
Spring, singing, come on around.
Catch me in that dog outfit. I'll stay for a few minutes.
All right, thanks very much. Okay, that takes us then to our third site plan for the evening for AFP-eight-zero-one-five-dash-two thousand and eighteen at six-six-six Quince Orchard Road, that's important. Exterior building renovations and minor site improvements for McDonald's at six-six-six Quince Orchard Road in the C-two general commercial zone. And this is an amendment to final site plan, presenting from staff is Jasmine Forbes, good evening.
Good evening. So stats before each present, amendment to final site plan application AFP-eight-zero-one-five-dash-two thousand and eighteen. This application comes before the planning commission in accordance with section twenty-four-dash-one-seventy-two A, which requires the commission to grant amendments to approve site plans. So this evening, the applicant's requesting approval for exterior renovations to the existing McDonald's building and minor site improvements at six-six-six Quince Orchard Road. And this is the last McDonald's that's being renovated in the city.
Déjà vu all over.
Right, exactly.
The plans include installation of electronic message board, which will need to be reviewed and approved by the planning commission in accordance to section twenty-four-dash-two-twelve-I. The applicant's also requesting a sun adjustment for three building signs pursuant to section twenty-four-dash-two-thirteen-A-F. And for this evening, we're kind of doing a little something different. I don't know if you noticed that the city has a drone program. So today, I want to thank Chris Norris and Chris Clifford from PIO. So this evening...
Did they fly the site?
Yes, they did, so we actually have a video of the site just to show you.
There it is.
This, this is where it's at. Okay, as you can see here, McDonald's is over here at the corner of Bank Street and Quince Orchard Road. It's going over the parking line. You can see it is located within the Quince Orchard Shopping Center, which past couple years has gone through a couple of renovations. So here's another aerial showing shooting out. And then we can see here, looking at the aerial, you can see the street on Quince Orchard Road, the grade sits higher than the building, you drive past McDonald's, all you see is just the roof and the, the green roof and the sign.
Right.
So you need the properties adjacent to the NIS property, which is here.
You can see the bike path that's under construction down in the right corner.
Now, on the other end, we see have the west elevation, which is the main entrance to the building. You also see the current driveway goes from the south, goes around the side onto the other side.
That's great, that's real good.
So that's something that we hope we will use in future presentations.
That is so cool.
And actually see the flow of traffic.
Yep, see an actual, the site in action. So this evening, I have Joe DiMarco from Bowler who is going to do the presentation this evening.
Thank you, good evening.
Good evening.
You gotta tie the drone.
That was pretty wild, that's fantastic, thank you, Jasmine. I will try to be brief, as this should look fairly darn familiar to everyone here. It is very much the same proposed level of improvements as the other buildings that have been here before you to present in the recent past few months. It is intended, so the site is located over here, as Jasmine's mentioned. Here is the zoom up of the site plan, just to walk through a couple of quick elements. The site itself is, has a fairly sizable parking field and the building right there is located along Quince Orchard roadway. The intention is to do very much the same improvements to the site solely to update the building, to modernize the look of the exterior, as well as modernize some of the signage that's on the exterior of the building. There is a small, I'll point out right here in this corner, a small bump out to the building, just shy of ninety, about ninety square feet. That's to accommodate a window on this corner and maintain the existing flow of traffic and the drive-through. There are improvements that we are proposing to the site itself on the exterior of the building to modify the parking to a small degree. The, the existing ADA spaces are located out here, and there is a ramp element that we saw in the aerial along the front of the building. There is a pretty sizable grade change in the parking lot from one side of the building to the other, from the drive-through side to the main front entrance. And this front entrance is an elevated entrance with a ramp element moving from low on this corner up to the door here with stairs on the other side. We would maintain that condition in generally, but we are proposing to modify it because the parking spaces here are not currently compliant from a slope standpoint. And then do, do not provide a very adequate pathway to be ADA compliant to the front door. So we would propose to relocate those spaces to the side where there's more of an opportunity to catch grade and get up to the doorway with current ADA standards, re-stripe this area and add a few islands in here to level this area out to make it compliant for ADA parking. And then also on the other side of the building, I'll just call attention to, we're still maintaining this entrance to the drive-through, but we, we are proposing to stripe, stripe out a few spaces over here that were backing up directly into that drive-through entryway, causing a little bit of congestion and really they weren't being utilized much anyway. So we really just took those out. The overall site itself is, it, it does have a holistic view of parking. We are part of the overall shopping center and there is a shared-use parking count that was done. We are removing spaces, seventeen spaces, and doing the improvements that I'm talking you guys through here, but we'd still be compliant based on that shared-use parking chart. One, one other element too, I know that we've talked about this on a few of the other ones, is because there is an expansive parking area, working with Jasmine, we did incorporate a pedestrian path, striped pathways through that lot directly to the building, which I think, just anticipating that that was, you know, a key issue on some of the other ones.
So let me, let me clarify, while you have this up, clarify, the, the area you blocked out, the parking has been removed, I, when I glanced by the plan, it didn't occur to me you painted it out. I was thinking you would be doing landscape islands and essentially removing the paving where that was done. You're not proposing that, or?
In, in, in the, in the access path, or in...
No, no, in the, the few spaces that are in the bottom right corner in this plan.
Correct.
Which way north is exactly.
This, this would just be a striped area, leaving the paving and striping it solely. Correct, this is as well. And then on this end, we did propose a few islands to better define some of the parking spaces over there.
And then on the path, I've been zooming it, because there's already islands on that, or is that striped?
The, there's two islands in the parking area. These are parking spaces that we're removing and striping for a, a pathway.
No, but where the islands are?
These islands?
Yeah.
Those, those would remain.
And, and they exist as, as landscape islands, so you're not, you're not changing those?
We're not changing them, there's actually lights located in those islands that we would maintain. All of the site lighting would remain just as it's there. Correct. Uh, any other items maybe on the site?
The fact that it's shared parking and it's common parking with the shopping center, do you have to go to the shopping center to do this, or is this your property?
Uh, so this has been discussed and coordinated with the property owner as well. I think that was one of the other key elements that we wanted to make sure we got ahead of. There was a discussion with the property owner about the proposed improvements and effectively the fact that we would be reducing parking, but still maintaining an adequate level based on the shared parking.
Okay, thank you.
So, so that, but that's also, that's the entire area, because there's always a lot, I mean, there's a lot of issues with parking closer to the, the, what's that, LA Fitness? All the way on the LA side?
It's dangly across, that's way...
Yeah, but I'm just saying, but there's a, there's always a parking issue there. But this takes into consideration the entire area, correct?
So, that's correct, the parking computations that we looked at do encapsulate the entire shopping. We, I, I'd say, you know, we, we looked at it initially just for our little pad area. We were adequately parked for the use that we have just in our, our area, but then we looked at the overall shopping center.
Yeah, but to be clear, that's how the plan was...
Correct.
Was approved, so you had to do that, so that's consistent with how the plan's been approved.
So in the staff report, I noted when the Staples building came before the planning commission in two thousand and sixteen, where they reduced the size of the staple, they had four tenants, they weren't really sure where they're gonna fill them at, so they created a shared parking chart and they parked those four tenant spaces at the highest parking demand, which is threshold uses. And they also requested a sixty-eight parking waiver request just in case any new tenant comes in, they don't have to keep coming back and requesting new waivers. So there was some thought, but in the staff report, it was noted that any developer on the shopping center would need to submit an updated shared parking chart with the current tenants that's in that, which I think right now they're currently all occupied, so...
Can, can we, can we talk about the approach to the drive-through? Because that's always a little dicey right there, especially with the spaces. And, you know, people waiting to get into, because that can really back up right there as people are waiting for, you know, to, to go through the, the drive-through. And then there are all those spaces there. And then people have to, you know, pass the cars that are waiting in line for the drive-through in the other, on the other side, like you're in England or something. So you're saying you're taking out, and I guess you have, you've taken out spaces that are closer to, like, the, the board, correct?
Correct, yeah.
How many spaces are taken out?
Yeah.
Approximately seven?
I think, you, you might be right. Uh, yeah, I, I, I think, you, you might be right. I, I thought it was six, but it, it may be six or seven in, in that area. It, it really, I mean, all of, there are spaces that are striped currently to today.
Right, right.
All the way to this perpendicular curb here. And so what we did is, the intention was that we wanted to absolutely remove the spaces that immediately backed up to a waiting vehicle right there at the, the menu board. The menu board's actually located over here. This is actually the first point of entry to the drive-through that, that's a, you know, one of those clearance spots.
Yeah, right.
And, and, and there is a proposed, what they'll designate as a pre-brows, a, you know, second car in line menu board.
Right, right.
We wanted to make sure we cleared that and we just thought it made sense to completely clear even this drive aisle that immediately then enters.
Uh-huh.
So the folks that are even trying to get in this way don't have to compete with vehicles here. At that thereafter, I mean, we, you know, the, the, the parking spaces, you know, we, we were intending to try to maintain the functional.
So, so I noticed that you have arrows, but I've noticed, you know, when we're there using, using that, that drive aisle, that folks from the other, like this front parking area will sometimes try to come out, but the people who are in line are, you know, are just kind of blocking them. So, so are you go, are, is it your intent to make it like a one-way in for that parking? I don't know if you can, but.
I don't think they can, because when, if it's one-way, it would have to be angled parking spaces.
Yeah, I don't think they can. Okay, okay, okay. It just, it just gets a little dicey there and I'm sure that you all have probably looked at that and.
Danny, are you concerned where they're showing the entrance to the drive-through now, the, the proposed new entrance where it's striped and they have the height control bar? Or are you talking about back where the main entrance into the shopping center?
I'm talking about like, I, I'm sorry, I can't.
You're talking about the northern, the northern entry into the parking area?
Right, right, yeah, right there, right there where you're, where, yeah, right there. Yeah, that, that can get a little dicey.
What's the stacking on that new lane, new proposed lane? How many cars stack up there?
Prior to this first space?
Yeah.
I think you have, uh, four vehicles that can stack up to that space.
Four vehicles?
Correct. From, from, that's, that's from the menu board back.
And you find that that's?
But, but I've noticed, sometimes right, right around lunchtime, I mean, it can stack up all the way back to the stop sign.
Okay.
Not, not counting.
It can get, I mean, people like McDonald's.
But then nobody would really be parking in those slots anyway.
Right, but if they were there, they could get out. I mean, I know this is, is there any concept, concern about?
Plants and trees.
Well, we're not, we're not in discussion yet, so just, if you've got to clarification, let's, let's, um, finish the presentation and get into discussion. Yeah, okay.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay.
Fine.
Yeah.
Uh, I'll.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Yes, I, I'll, I'll zip through the architecture, because the architecture is very commensurate with the other buildings that are in, in front of you. Uh, incorporates the similar materials, um, similar signage and that's the, again, the, the request for the, uh, signage, the size of the signage that we've talked in the past, the height of the signage specifically, um, but it does incorporate the McDonald's, uh, M as well as the logo itself. Uh, here is the, um, the front, excuse me, this is the, uh, drive-through side of the building here, uh, with the two windows here and here. Um, again, the M logo on that side. This then would be the other side. This would be the front of the building incorporating the stairs and then that ramped, um, facility that I mentioned. And then this is just the side that the bump out, uh, would be proposed upon.
So, so you're adding a new, a second drive-through window, because it doesn't exist now?
Uh, current, so, uh, we are adding in a bump out to the building to accommodate, yeah, it's a second window.
Okay, does the height of the building, um, as proposed, is that at the same height as the current parapet that you scored it off or is it taller or?
I'm not actually positive on that. I, I, I would, yeah, I, I would have to find out the differential between the two.
Cause the visible.
What I'm driving at is we've had discussions about, um, rooftop equipment visibility from the street, but with Quince Orchard, essentially the elevation change being all those state features.
I, I think we'll specifically ask our, um, it's a, it's a code requirement in our building code. So we'll make sure that, um, permitting takes a good hard look at that because it's a, you know, it's a totally different angle. It's not the angle from the, from the driveway that goes next to it. It has to come from the street. Yeah, so we'll, we'll need to have, uh, permitting look at that, make sure that, that all the rooftop equipment is properly screened.
Okay, very good. All right, any other questions?
So, looking from a signage standpoint, you've got the, the Golden Arches M on all of the facades, correct? Or at least three, the three, sorry, the three main ones. Um.
Correct.
But the actual McDonald's text is only on
The side.
The side, you know, that, that you approached with the drive-through, correct? Am I reading this site plan?
It's, it would be on the side.
It's on the opposite side of the drive-through.
The northern side, yeah.
It's, as you exit the drive-through.
It faces the, the driveway into in and out of, uh, Quince Orchard block.
Whereas the, the, the existing McDonald's has the McDonald's signage facing Quince Orchard. I'm looking at the street view image. It's in the packet.
Correct.
Is there any other site signage identifying McDonald's? There's no, you know, there's no monument sign. There's no, it's not listed anywhere. We're relying a hundred percent on the building signage for people to know that here's McDonald's.
The, so, I, I, I didn't mean to flip that. Um, there is an existing sign out. Gosh, sorry, I don't know what's, what's happening. There, there is an existing sign out at the road, at, at the entrance.
Okay.
Um, I don't know why that's, um, um, but, uh, I'm actually not certain if that incorporates McDonald's or not.
There is an existing monument sign at the corner of Bank Street and Quince Orchard.
Okay.
That says McDonald's on it.
It does say, okay.
Is that bigger place or is that going away?
No, that, that, that would remain.
Stay as is.
So refaced or?
Uh-uh.
It's the M.
No, that, that, that would be outside of the scope, yeah.
All right, any, any other questions? I don't think anybody's here from the public to comment on this as, we only have staff in the audience. Uh, who are welcome to comment. All right, Jasmine, what's, is that, is that the end of the presentation?
Do you want to briefly go over that?
Uh, oh, I, I, again, I'll just quickly flip through. So again, stuff that I think that you all have seen in the past, but thi- this is just quick elevations of, this is the signage itself, which again is shown on the elevations of the building and then the digital, uh, signage as proposed for, um, the pre-brows and the, uh, menu board itself. That was it.
Cool.
All right, um, recommendation please.
So I have three different, um, motions.
Go ahead.
So the first one is staff recommends that the planning commission, based on the exhibit submitted, the applicant's testimony and the staff report findings of recommendation grant AFP dash eight zero one five dash two thousand and eighteen amendment to final said plan, finding compliance with sections twenty-four dash one seventy and twenty-four one seventy-two A of the city code with no conditions. Uh, staff recommends that the planning commission, based on the exhibit submitted, the applicant's testimony and the staff report findings of recommendations grant approval to permit, uh, forty-two inch tall ancillary signs in compliance with section twenty-four dash two thirteen A F of the city code. And staff recommends that the planning commission, based on the exhibit submitted, the applicant's testimony and the staff report findings of recommendation grant approval for an electric, uh, electronic message board, finding compliance with section twenty-four dash two twelve of the C code.
Okay, great, thanks. Um, I, so I'm, I'm glad to see, again, reinvestment in these existing buildings and, and it comes along nicely with the renovation of the existing shopping center. Um, I do think that, let me think here. So the infill area, the striped area, you know, I, I recognize you need to make the traffic work a little better and make it safer and a little more intuitive. That's fantastic. I, I have, I don't like to see, um, paving just striped though. I think if, if, um, if it can be worked out, that would, I think, be better to be returned to a landscape island or a landscape condition. Um, you know, pulling, pulling the paving out and, and redoing the curb and gutter to, to incorporate that. I think it is a lot for the corner of, um, essentially Bank Street, I guess, at that point.
Yeah.
It, it, you know, softens up and provides a little of a landscape off where it's good. Um, and then it becomes a zone that's, that's, you know, a striped zone on a big parking field is kind of a no, a no man's land as far as whether it's, it's, it's owned for, it ends up just being a place to pile up snow or collect trash, whatever it is. So I, I think it'd be better if that would return to, um, landscape area. Um, on the height, uh, Trudy, you mentioned it was a building code issue to make sure that the rooftop equipment is screened. Should we try to make that a con- condition or, uh, cause here, I'm thinking, right now, the building is tall, is a certain height and it has some, some level of parapet there, whatever it is. If, if the requirement is to screen rooftop equipment, then theoretically that just means a screen itself. It doesn't mean raising the parapet of the building, right?
That's correct. I mean, what I would, I would recommend that you have a condition that the, the applicant, uh, work with staff to ensure that the, the parapet wall, um, is, blocks any, um, equipment in accordance with the city code, in accordance with chapter five of the city code.
So would you put up the, the elevation that's from the Quince Orchard roadside?
Current, the current situation?
This is kind of, well, the proposed, so this is kind of for the commission to, to comment on. If, just for sake of, if that needed to get three feet taller to hide equipment, I'm not sure making the whole building three feet taller along the side and around the parapet is the right answer. I don't know. Or if it would just be a screen kind of setback from the building parapet that would screen the rooftop equipment. I don't know what, what the proposal would be or how, how the staff would take that. But what would, any, any comments from folks or any preferences?
I guess my, first off, the more I'm, the more I'm looking at these elevations, I think what we're, I think the reality is this building has two fronts. Actually, it may have three, but it really has two fronts. It's got the fa- the, the most visible to most people is the, the, you know, top two-thirds of the facade facing Quince Orchard Road, which in this elevation and when you zoom in on the, the, uh, north elevation, it looks like you have, that band across the top there is a louvered metal screen wall. So on the parking lot side and on the two ends, it's the, the stucco material goes all the way up to the top of the parapet, but on the Quince Orchard roadside, you've got a louvered metal screen wall. So I think.
That's, that, that, that's actually on, it's on the drive-through, the drives-through end and it's also on the front facing the, uh, facing the sh- the parking and the shopping center. If you look at, uh, page eleven.
It wraps around like three sides.
Right.
Uh, yeah, two and a half, okay. So that, that changes my one, I'm, I'm, I will answer your question, John. That, that changes my one main concern that just popped in is that we were creating a, a backside of the building on what was actually the front. Um, I don't know, looking, looking at this, I don't know how you would make one backside taller than the rest. You know, there's a, there's a consistent line that goes all the way around the building that's tied to the dark brick vertical elements.
Right, that was actually my question about whether our direction on the condition about screening the rooftop equipment should talk about raising the whole, the whole parapet of the building or stepping back from that for more of a roof screen kind of condition. That, that was, and that was sort of the discussion point. I was trying to get it in front of you guys.
My idea is that at least if they have an additional roof screen that's needed, that it be a similar material as this, the screen that they have, uh, along the parapet.
Yeah.
And, and I would also say that one way you deal with that, and it depends what the roof equipment layout is, but, you know, if that's set back four or five feet from every, every side and it's a separate element, I don't think that will be a, a downside. I mean, looking, looking at the existing McDonald's and the roofline, the street view shot that's in there and having watched a couple of these be renovated, my guess is that your screen wall's gonna be at least as high as the, as the existing roof. So, I mean, you'll, we'll have to see how that goes.
I mean, looking at, like, right now, looking at the street view, you can actually see a piece of equipment right now.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. Are you, you guys are replacing mechanical equipment or not? It's all, that's all remaining?
Uh, no, there, there is some mechanical equipment being replaced as part of that.
Okay, so there may also be a change in equipment that negates the street view. Who knows?
Can, can I speak, uh, to, back to the striping, uh, uh, on, on the, uh, drive-through side? I, I'm, I'm fairly confident making that entire area landsc- landscaped, uh, condition would take us beyond our threshold to be exempt from stormwater and would trip us into a s- I, I, i- i- if, unless that is not going to be considered as disturbance area.
No, it would be.
I know that that would in fact take us beyond that. I think we were not right against that five thousand square foot threshold, but it, that, I believe certainly would. So I, I, I was just going back. I think that's why we didn't do that.
What's the issue?
They're only allowed to, in order to avoid having to do stormwater management for the entire area that they're utilizing, they have a threshold of five thousand square feet and they're disturbing probably very close to that number.
With the accessible parking.
With the accessible parking.
So through, through the quirk of our city code requirements, we're passing up the opportunity to reduce impervious surface.
Well.
Well, theoretically.
The applicant is proposing to do that.
All right.
Yeah, I, I know where you're headed with this.
I mean, it, it is what it is. It's, I mean, the, the code is what the code is.
That I can guarantee.
It's one of those like.
So there's two.
That probably by itself.
If you alter what was originally calculated for stormwater management above five thousand square feet, you've got to recalculate, re-engineer for it.
Well, this shopping center was not really done with stormwater management.
Yeah, I know where you're headed. Okay.
I mean, that's the applicant's choice. The commission has its own decision to make.
Well, i- it's a great point to be made because I think if you then open up the possibility that the whole shopping center then is, is brought into question in terms of compliance.
I don't think it's the whole, but whatever they're doing, they would have to do it. And you would think that they, and working with our stormwater management division, depending on how well the, the, that area perks, they could get some, um, environmental site design within that area to take care of it. But, um, they have not chosen to do that.
So if we take it to a level of engineering and approvals, it would be a few more steps away from what we're talking about tonight, okay?
Mm-hmm.
All right, something to consider.
Can I, may I ask a question that I just noticed and I apologize, but when you look at the elevations with the little addition, it looks like it's in the, in the middle of the building, but on the site plan, it's not on the middle of the building? If you look at the elevations on eleven twenty-nine, page eleven.
Oh, that one. It looks like it's set back.
It's set back and there's a door.
Correct. Uh, uh, the, the, the thing in the middle of this elevation is actually, that's existing? That, that's there. It, it, that, the addition is that little notch, yeah, right in there and, and there is a door, yeah.
Okay, that wasn't very clear on the site plan, or if it was rendered would help.
What about, um, for that drive, drive-through, that area, bollards or some form of a barrier so that it wouldn't be used for dumping, uh, snow or other, or just stacking of cars or whatever it is, just something that would give a clear demarcation that that island is an island, even though it doesn't necessarily have to appear like an island. With trees, we just mark it off as such, so it's not just painted.
I, I have a problem with bollards just because it ends up being hard to sweep, sweep all the trash that is, that's fucked back in.
My, my, if we're gonna leave it as pavement, you gotta put the snow somewhere and.
I would rather have it. I'd rather put the snow there.
Put the snow there than lose parking spaces for it. I mean.
Absolutely. I mean, you're gonna lose, like, you know, usable parking spaces over, like, you know, and you have an area that it's empty. I would just use it for snow removal, but. Yeah.
My first choice is landscape.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's right.
Okay.
My, my, can I go back to the signage real quick? Just because when you look and I, I'm, I've been going, sitting here going back and forth up Quince Orchard Road on, on street view and the elevation where you guys are putting the actual McDonald's text has almost, because of the trees, has zero visibility. As you're coming up Quince Orchard Road, you can't see it. If you're coming on Quince Orchard Road the other way, that elevation has nothing on it. So right now, the signage, the big McDonald's sign that is facing Quince Orchard Road, you can at least see that as you're coming in both directions. In this proposed option, you see nothing but the M. So, uh, I would question whether that, that McDonald's lettering doesn't wanna be on the Quince Orchard Road side, just from a, just from a pure visibility standpoint. I mean, granted, a lot of people that go to these, go to McDonald's, go to the same one every day and, and know where it is, but if you're not, if you're trying, if you're driving on Quince Orchard Road saying, hey, there's a McDonald's here somewhere.
If you're going north though on Quince Orchard Road, you're doing about forty-five miles an hour and there's a NIST entrance over there. So you're coming. So you're coming up, you're approaching it as you're going up that hill. When you're coming down Quince Orchard Road, you can't see anything coming down that road and it wouldn't really make any difference.
Yeah.
I mean, just for my own, you know, driving down that road.
I think the question process is, is the elevation as proposed, whatever that is, at odds with any of the standards we would have for, for a building or whatever?
I, I don't think it's set us with our standards. I think it's entirely the purview of the applicant to decide whether they want to.
I, I don't disagree with that at all. I'm just questioning the actual usefulness of it, but.
Well, they could, they could come back and add it. They wouldn't have to come back necessarily to you because they already have the M approved.
Okay.
They could come back and have, add the McDonald's facing Quince Orchard.
I would add also, real quick, that the tree that's blocking that sign currently is actually proposed to be removed with this application.
Problem solved.
Click that and I'm gonna try, no.
But no, I, I want to be careful that we don't, we don't try to design on the fly here and we're really direct to what the proposal is. And, and I don't see anything that would necessarily be at odds with what our, our standards for approval are, except for all the striping and the paving. That's another issue.
I have, I have a.
Go ahead.
An issue. I, I'm a bit concerned about the handicap parking being across from the drive-out coming out of the drive-through. And I guess, can, can you, can you talk to that? I mean, I guess you all looked at all kinds of ways to get it. You know, I, I just, I'm having a little heartburn with that.
It's McDonald's.
Sure, sure. And, and quite honestly, it was, it was an item that was discussed with staff.
Okay.
It was raised as a concern. I'll offer, the parking lot, as is right now, is, is pretty sharply, you know, graded and that area on that northern corner sort of just byproduct of the nature of the existing site presented as the best opportunity to create a pathway to the building while also creating an area that we could grade to, to be compliant. We did, again, working with staff, sort of modify what we did up in that corner to do our best to keep the ADA spaces, the, the van accessible space, the one that's closest to the building. You'll, you'll notice there's three spaces up there.
Right, there's three spaces, right.
Three spaces. The van accessible space is located closest to the building, while the other non-van accessible spaces are the ones that are further away. And we did pull that area coming out of the drive-through. We put a stop bar there with signage to make sure that there is ample room for a, a vehicle to exit the drive-through lane but stop and allow for vehicles that are utilizing those ADA spaces to have adequate room to back up out of their space, back up, you know, and with, with ample room to make a turn to get out into the drive lane while someone stopped out of the drive-through. So we did, we did look at that in working with staff, came up with a, you know, modified version, which is what you see here, to pull that stop bar back and try to keep traffic, you know, coming out of the drive-through away from the ADA spaces to the best ability we could. And again, we did look at other places on the site to locate these ADA parking spaces and quite frankly, didn't have any other option where we could place them and get them to the building without significantly modifying the parking lot itself and/or, you know, the building, but we weren't.
So right next to the two spaces there, and it says curb, propose island with curb and gutter?
Yes.
So it raised?
Can you guys zoom into that at all?
Yeah. The, so the, the actual means by which we are able to flatten that area out in to enough degree that that parking, where we're putting the ADA spaces is now compliant with ADA coating, slope and fall across those spaces, we needed those islands and that area that you just indicated, propose island curb and gutter, that is actually a landscape island. So we are actually taking a paved area, installing curb and there will be a, you know, grass island there, but what that allows us to do is actually sort of modify the grade there, using, using those islands to flatten it out. So we are grading in, I say grading, changing the, the elevation of the parking field in this general area and utilizing these islands to sort of sketch the grade.
That's a really important point. It's a three-dimensional problem. It's one thing to align it in plan, it's another to get the vertical alignment and slopes worked out and, you know, there's no fault of yours or anybody else, you inherited a site that already has some, some bad issues or bad stuff, so.
I would submit that of the three modifications, the three sites that we've looked at, actually, this is probably the safest in terms of pedestrian walking to the entrance because some of those other ones are so tight, like the one on Doris Town Road. I mean, you take your life in your hands just getting to that entrance because the only way, there's no real front.
Right.
So this, I think, gives us a much better opportunity to, to be a safer environment for the person walking from his car to the, to the restaurant rather than just getting, getting in line and waiting to pick it up at a takeout window. So I think this makes more sense.
But, and there is, so that's striping all the way across the, from those two spots to the.
The handicap spots?
The, um, yeah, there's striping there, right?
Correct.
And so you're gonna, you said there's gonna be a sign that says stop?
Right there? At, at the exit of the drive-through, there's a stop bar with a, a stop sign there for vehicles exiting. So, so vehicles are required to stop after exiting.
Do not enter.
And do not enter a stop sign, a stop on, are you putting stop on the ground too?
We are painting it on the ground as well as signing it down.
Okay. Okay, all right. Any other concerns, questions? All right, let's, let me back into what the proposed approval is. Obviously, with the site plan, amendment to final plan, we didn't talk much about the, the ancillary signs that were proposed in the building and the message board. This is consistent with a couple of other proposals, but given this is a different site or a different, different location, are there any concerns with the, with the signage proposal?
No.
No? All right. And then the amended plan, I think we've been through on what options there were or are not on the, on the site plan. I, I am, I'm sensitive to the fact that invoking a, a modification to the parking field that's gonna then turn into a big reengineering of the, of the stormwater, I think, could be, could be a little bit imposing. Not to give away, not to show my cards, but frankly, you could turn around and say, well, we just won't stripe out the parking spaces and, and there'd be no, there'd be no.
No, no.
No proposal there. So if there's a, there's a gesture at getting, getting a little bit more control over the congestion's fine, I think. Do, what, Trudy, you were kind of headed towards a condition, I think, for the roof screening or for the height of the building, what, what did we decide to do there?
She, I think she proposed something?
The applicant to work with staff to ensure that rooftop equipment is screened in accordance with chapter five of the city code.
Where would that go?
At the time of building permit issuance.
Everybody comfortable with that?
The first one?
Yes.
The first recommendation.
That goes with the first move, motion?
First recommendation.
Well, I, I mean.
Okay.
Back, back to the, back to the discussion of striping versus vegetated island and the potential stormwater impacts, like, you know, I think Trudy started to say something or start, started to allude to the fact that, you know, it may be, at least on first glance, it may be possible to use that space to achieve some of your stormwater mitigation. Have you guys at least done a back-of-the-napkin look at, okay, if we did have to do stormwater, is it really as big a deal as we think it is? You know, could we use that island and not have to do a bunch of other crazy stuff? I mean, I, I'm not suggesting we, you know, require it, but I would just like to know that it's at least been looked at and if, in fact, it is fairly low-hanging fruit to check the stormwater box, that you guys at least considered doing that.
So I'll say that we, in, in, in all honesty, we, we really didn't run through any stormwater calculations solely because with these renovations for these buildings, quite frankly, the intent is we, we don't want to go to a stormwater requirement unless absolutely necessary. So I, I can tell you, just looking at the area of that island, looking at what may need to occur, I mean, that, that is a viable space for stormwater if, if that was a absolute necessity. But I think the reason why we did not go that direction and the intent wasn't to go that direction is, you know, the, I think the, the intention of the renovation is just such that it's fairly minor and it's really to be focused on the building mostly and complying with ADA regulations, as opposed to renovating the entire parking lot for what McDonald's may, you know, be looking to do now. They're, they're really trying to comply and modernize.
Okay. Okay, that's fair enough.
Anything else? Ready for a motion? All right, first up would be the site plan, amended site plan with one condition, is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move that the planning commission, based on the exhibit submitted, applicant's testimony, staff report findings and recommendation grant AFP eighty fifteen dash twenty-eighteen amendment to final site plan finding it in compliance with section twenty-four dash one seventy and twenty-four dash one seventy-two A of the city code with one condition.
Second.
Move to the second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That passes unanimously. Next up is a recommendation to approve forty-two inch tall ancillary signs. Your motion, please.
Mr. Chair, I move that the planning commission, based on the exhibit submitted, applicant's testimony, staff reports finding and recommendation grant approval to per- to permit forty-two inch tall ancillary signs in compliance with section twenty-four dash two-one-three A, subparagraph F of the city code.
Second.
It's moved to second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. And finally, a, a recommendation to approve electronic, an electronic message board. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move that the planning commission, based on the exhibit submitted, applicant's testimony, staff reports findings and recommendation grant approval for an electronic message board finding it in compliance with section twenty-four dash two-one-two of the city code.
Second.
Let the record shine. Robust. It's moved to second, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? And that passes, you know, thanks very much. Is that the last McDonald's in Gaithersburg? Is that the last McDonald's? Good luck, thank you for.
Thank you so much.
Sounds like an HBO movie.
For the detail. All right. That takes us to, takes us to from the commission. Phil, may I start with you?
Thanks, I think I'm good for this evening.
Okay, Danny?
Yes, the Maryland Planning Commissioners Association had its annual conference for twenty-eighteen in the city of Gaithersburg and it was a rousing, rousing success. I had prepared a statement and I left it at home, so I will present that statement at our next meeting, but I really want to thank everyone who took the time out of their busy, busy schedules to come and, and indulge me in the, in the association and I, and I, I'll get into more when I read my statement, but Trudy, you are amazing.
Excellent. Thanks, Danny, for, for spearheading. That was, that was a nice thing to have come to the city on this cycle.
Yeah.
Thank you. Lloyd?
No, I'd also like to commend Danny and, and the planning staff actually for pulling off what was a really very educational, very informative two days that we spent here. And I just thought that Danny did a great job and I really appreciate your leadership on that.
Thank you.
On October the twenty-third, I actually attended two sessions on aging population communities and that was also very good. Excellent presentations made by professionals who are very much up on aging populations in the communities. And I, I would highly recommend, I believe, is a transcript, is there a transcript available for that?
Yeah, and I'm in the process of obtaining the, the presentation itself in the evening that we had.
Was it recorded? Was it?
No.
Oh, okay.
But just the, the PowerPoint presentation, I'll probably provide it as a PDF.
Okay.
The mayor has to ask for it and so I'll, I'm working on that.
It was well-attended too, both sessions. There was a session by invite only in the afternoon and then in the evening at the Arts Barn, which was very, very well-attended. One other thing I'd just like to bring to your attention, whoever wants to read, there's an article in the October twenty-eighth New York Sunday Times. It's called Driverless Cars Won't Help Traffic Congestion. And it's basically planners say autonomous rapid transit and better urban design would work. So in light of all the discussions we have here about the future, as well as what we have currently with our infrastructure, I'd highly recommend reading the article. It's New York Times, Sunday, October twenty-eighth, I believe was in the business section.
Okay.
And I have a copy over here, if anybody wants to read it, I'll pass it around.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to say, thank you, Lloyd, for highlighting that. We had a really successful session on aging populations. I have to say, I learned a great deal about this subject and I think that there's so much more that we can all be, make ourselves aware and I think one of the things that I would share is that boomers and millennials trend alike and that was a, it's like a strong revelation in terms of how we look at our planning, our transportation and our housing.
Right.
So it was very informative.
Yeah.
Greg?
Yeah.
All right. Greg, Trudy, who wants to go first?
I would just remind you guys, the next meeting is actually on Tuesday, November twentieth, because that's the holiday, Thanksgiving.
Okay.
And the only thing is I have Rusally's certificate for passing the planning commission and the board of appeals education course. And so our commission is totally certified in more ways than one.
Well, certified.
All right, anything else tonight? Well, if not, have a good evening and we're adjourned.